We have three items on the agenda, and we're getting started a little bit late, so we want to get it moving on because we have something really important. We have lots of important things to talk about, and we want to leave some time for the stormwater discussion. So, the first item on the agenda is a change order. Change order number 11 to a contract buy-in between the Norman Municipal Authority and Flint Co., increasing the contract amount by $277,298 for revised contract amount of $26,437.814 for fabrication and installation of the public art piece for the Norman Forward Central Library Project. And Terry Floyd and Erin Gavigan are here to give us some information about that. It's pretty exciting.
Absolutely, and I know we are short on time, so we'll breeze through this, but I do want to say this is one of the true places where art and science meet, because this is a lot of art and a lot of science to make this work. And so I wanted to acknowledge, really, a group of people. So this is a team effort, and what I mean by team is the engineering, and you remember you had a contract with KFC Engineering to engineer this. So KFC Engineering, MSR, our project architect, they're structural engineers, and all of their team, our team from Flint Co., myself, of course, Erin and Debbie with the Norman Arts Council, Pioneer Library System, a whole bit of landscape architects and regular architects, and of course, ADG, our program manager. So to give you some idea, at any one time, there might be up to 25 people on a conference call to talk about, and the artists themselves, to talk about how to execute this. This began really from day one of selection, how to make this project work. And so, set the stage for that, to tell you tonight, we're bringing forward a change order to the contract with Flint Co. This change order will be for the construction and the fabrication of the piece. So you remember your prior actions on this particular item were with Paul Coxedge Studios for the design, and then with KFC Engineering to engineer their design, there are. And then this is the third piece, which is the fabrication and construction to put this piece in place. This is not coming out of the Central Library budget. This is, you will be also asking this action on your consent docket for an appropriation from the Norman Forward Public Art Project Construction Line into our project to cover the cost of this change order. And then we'll begin the notice to proceed. This piece will be completed, we hope, by May. That's what it's slated to be completed by, May of this coming year. It will be in advance of the completion of the library, so we'll probably have a process very similar to what we saw with the East Bridge. We will have a ceremony for the ribbon cutting of the Central Library piece, and then later take the step, once we're completely online with the Central Library. So that's the timeline for the piece. And so with that, I want to show you the latest renderings of the piece as it is drawn, and I'll let Erin speak just a little bit about the piece. I do want to point out two things that you may get a question on. How tall is it? It's 46 feet, 8 inches tall, so it actually is on the, it's just above the third level. So as you look out, you'll look out, and this is actually a view, I believe, and I'll point to Flint Co. This is from the walkout, from the walkout.
Yeah, on the third level, looking south.
Right, from the walkout terrace, looking south. So this is what you would see on the third level of the piece. But it's also so dynamic in the additional rendering, and I'll flip back for Erin. This is what you would see coming into the main entrance. So, just a really, and with that, I'll let Erin speak, because I'll get into talking about the art, and I'll be way off this.
Well, Terry invited me and asked me to just kind of refresh us, and I know some of you were not on City Council when we made the selection of this piece, but to kind of fill you in on the artist's vision. So Paul Coxedge is the artist. He is from London, and he came here for a site visit. He was one of three finalists that we invited to do a site visit for this piece. The library was much more of an open shell at that point, but he was very excited about it. It was his first trip to Oklahoma. He was really very interested in our open skies. It's not something that you see in London, if any of you have been there. Open skies, the winds, as far, the landscape that you can see so far in the distance. And as he visited with library staff, he was really impressed with our community's embrace of a sense of knowledge and of our investment in not just one, but two libraries for the community. And so, he did one previous piece that was along the same theme of pages being lifted in the wind.
What's it called?
It is, as yet, untitled. We're waiting for the title from the artist. But as Terry said, the piece is 40...
Almost 47.
47 feet tall. Each piece of paper, and this was really amazing to me when I saw what the studio had done to plan this, each piece of paper is mapped out on a grid. They know exactly which curve goes where, and which, all hundreds of these pieces.
264 pieces.
264 pieces, and they know where every single one of them is going. So the piece itself connects with paper as an invention that changed the course of human history. Our sculpture pays homage to the millions of pieces of paper that will be in the library itself, but also emphasizes our changing relationship with paper. The tangibility of a turning page has always been at the heart of learning, but as we become more electronic, we turn less pages, and so there's a nostalgia to this piece as well. And we thought that a library is a perfect place to play into the nostalgia of that. But my favorite story, though, about this piece was during our selection process, and we had, one of the architects from MSR was conferencing, conference call in with us. We were talking about the piece afterwards, and someone said, "There's nothing like this piece in Oklahoma." And the architect from MSR said, "No, there's nothing like this piece anywhere in the country." So it gave us all goosebumps to know that the architecture firm, the designers, were so, already so invested in this design, and felt like it was a really good fit with their overall design of the building.
So it's truly a team effort, and something everyone on our team has been invested in, and we're happy now to bring this forward for you, for us, to allow us to build it and fabricate it, and make it a reality.
What are the pieces of paper made out of, again?
They're made out of aluminum. They're 12 inches by 16 inches, and they are 3/16 inch thick. And I could go on and on about why that's important, but it's all about weight and durability. Brenda's shaking her head, we're out of time. But there was rumors into that this morning, and they are powder coated, and Mary just gave me the...
Do they have any written on these pages?
Can we sign one?
We can ask, if you can sign a page.
Hell resistant?
They are rated for 110 mile an hour.
Wind and hail, and rain. All of it. Any other questions for Terry and Erin?
Be on your consent docket tonight, as well.
Thank you all so much. This is the fun kind of stuff. Yay! Okay, item number two is a change order. It's change order number two to a contract buy-in between the City of Norman, the Norman Municipal Authority, and Central Contracting Services, increasing the contract amount by $16,393.47 for a revised contract amount of $1,563,869.47 to complete the recycling pad at the East Norman Recycling Center as part of the Urban Concrete Pavement Street Maintenance Bond Program contract.
Thank you. This is change order number two, and this is an example of great cooperation between departments in the city, the utility department and the public works department. Utility department specifically, the sanitation division is bringing you this change order. The sanitation division, we haul stuff. We mostly garbage, but we don't build roads and things of that nature. So the city, the public works department, already had a contract with a contract with a cement person that does a lot of roads, and so we used that contract and those unit prices to build our parking area for our recycling center. So rather than trying to bid everything out, you have a million dollar plus contract with a contractor you trust, with good unit prices, and we just piggybacked and essentially used him to do our parking lot. So the first change order was just having the sanitation division use public works to build the parking lot, and the second change order is the parking lot's built, and we had some adjustments to make on the grading and the retaining wall, things of that nature. But the parking lot's built, and we're having a ribbon cutting this Friday afternoon.
Yes, and thank you.
So we can go over the specifics if you want, but it's $16,000.
Well, thank you, thank you so much. I know that it took two years to get that recycling. I remember that very well, and then it seemed like within just no time at all, it was being taken away again, and so that we could build a library, but it's back now, and that's the good thing. Councilmember Wilson?
No, I have nothing, just much applause.
She was applauding.
I'm just applauding. Oh, you're just applauding, okay.
So I didn't go into specifics of the parking area, too. It's nine inches of concrete, steel reinforced, but I'm just trying to make fun of Terry's.
Okay. Did we get...
Is it hail resistant?
It's hail resistant.
Did we get glass recycling? Yes?
Yes, we have glass recycling there. Or I should say, no, you have to wait until Friday when you show up.
Okay, I've already got my bags ready to go. I'll be bringing my recycling to the ribbon cutting. Okay. Item number three is continued discussion regarding a stormwater utility and capital bond program. And I think that... Amanda, and Andy?
All right.
Would the, we have a number of members of the citizens committee, the stormwater committee. Would you guys raise your hand, so we know where you are? Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're not going to really do a presentation tonight. We welcome, we thank you all for letting us sit here again. You're probably tired of seeing us. Several of you were in the committee meeting when we reconvened last week. This is a very quick update of that, and then we will really turn it over to you for some discussion of what you guys would like to see moving forward.
I can jump on.
So we reconvened last week on the 13th. We had well over a quorum. I think we were only missing two or three committee members, which is pretty impressive after not having met for 10 months. So we appreciate the committee still being involved and interested in the topic. We kind of went over what we had gone over with you and the public outreach that we had done, and the feedback we had gotten from citizens over all these many months. The changes to the capital projects list was presented, which was something that was requested last time we sat with you all, and got kind of next steps on what the committee thinks needs to happen with program funding. There was a lot of consensus. They support the changes to the capital projects list, which was in the letter that we sent you. There was, the top 12 projects will be taken care of with those, the top 12 across the city will be addressed with those changes.
But it still have the different wards all represented.
Correct.
So top 12, we think that was, I think that was a really good change, and I think we appreciated that, so it was very well received.
The committee unanimously supported those changes, felt strongly about both the utility and a bond being on the same ballot in April, but if it's not the will of the council, we at least hope the bond would be on that April 2019 ballot. And then we requested additional information from council on the utility fee structures. You know, we've presented three options to you all and to the citizens over six, seven, eight months, and if you are truly interested in putting it on an April ballot, it was asked that we reconvene and work on the utility, and we then said, "Great," but we need some direction from council. So that's why we're here tonight.
And I think a lot of that was really based on the idea that the recommendation, after a lot of this conversation, was that we thought the flat fee was our preferred, but that at the conversations way back, I guess this is back January probably, or earlier this year, where that there was still this desire to have a tiered approach. And really, from the committee's perspective, the idea of having a utility, moving it quickly in front of the voters was probably the biggest deal, not necessarily whether it was tiered or flat, as long as it was a reasonable, whatever reasonable is, but not in a place where it could actually potentially be supported, we think, by a good majority of our citizenry.
Yeah, the committee felt strongly that April was a unique opportunity, and that we need to try and hopefully take advantage of that. So here are the questions that we posed to you this evening for discussion. Like I said, we're not really doing a presentation. It's really more of a discussion from you all and what you would or would not like to see. All of these questions, we would hope to get answers to tonight. We do tentatively plan on reconvening Monday, the committee, on the Monday, the 3rd, at 3 o'clock, but not if we don't have anything to work on.
I think the committee was very respectful of the idea that the links that each of you have to your particular wards and the citizens within each ward is unique for each and every single one of you. We know that as a committee, but I think for us as a committee, there was, there was a lot of conversation about, and I think a couple of you were there, so you heard this as well, was, there's a lot of conversation about, we feel like we've kind of done the work from a stormwater perspective. So if there's uniqueness or things that you feel like as a council we need to work on, then we're happy to do that. And that was very, that was also unanimously said. So that's really what Monday, next Monday, right, next Monday's meeting is about, and so if we can answer these questions, that would really help us help you, I mean, kind of that whole idea of letting us as a committee make sure that we're able to bet whatever you think is the appropriate plan of action. So come, I guess, as Amanda said, just asking for some really very clear direction, if possible.
And they're kind of lined out here, you know? We can start with, is one of the committee's proposed options acceptable? If so, which one? I don't know how you all want to facilitate this discussion, but...
So let's start, although I know that what the rate would be may have a lot to do with whether or not we think we're ready to put it on with the other bond issues, but so, let's talk about, just a minute, let's talk about putting both the transportation and stormwater on together. I've heard a lot of support for that, so we're seeing shaken heads. So we're thinking, Councilmember Wilson?
Such a tough thing. I fear that putting them on together will jeopardize our opportunity to get the transportation money that we need due to the volatile nature of the conversation that happens around stormwater. I just wanted to say it, but...
Okay, we have one person that's concerned about it. Councilmember Bierman first, and then Councilmember Castleberry.
I kind of, I feel like every day, I kind of go back and forth on whether or not I think they should be on together. I do, I do think that there's something appealing to the idea of kind of a large vision and a slate of projects. At the same time, you know, there is a part of me that feels similarly to Councilmember Wilson, that stormwater, it carries a lot of baggage with it, and still does, even now. And I don't want to unnecessarily harm the chances of a transportation bond or, and/or whatever else we decide to put on there because of how controversial stormwater usually is. So I'm not going to sit here and say that I'm fully in support of it, because I do recognize that, catch me tomorrow, and I might feel differently, so...
Mayor, could I, because I think the question I always ask on that, if I might, is, when would that time be? Because I think that the question about an infrastructure package from your vision to your original comment there is what our committee was really thinking, is, at some point, then, is stormwater, what does it take to actually have that? Is it a historic flood like Houston, or what is it that does that? Or do you have the ability now to do something that's unique with a vision package? Now, obviously, I'm very biased, so understand that, so, but I think that's the question at hand, is, when would it be, if not now?
Councilmember Clark?
I would argue I'm very biased, too, because I campaigned in 2016 on a stormwater solution, which we don't have yet. And I think we've got a wonderful proposal through a citizen-based solution to a community-wide problem, and I'm ready to move forward on it. And I've also heard many Norman residents saying, "If you don't put stormwater first, we will not support transportation." So that's a double-edged sword.
I hear what they think about the senior center, so I mean...
Well, we're moving forward. I'm excited with the progress on that as well, but I think it's well past due. I think, I like the packaging, marketing opportunity of doing something we know needs to be done, and I see no reason to not combine them, and I fully support a infrastructure package for Norman in terms of transportation and stormwater in April.
Okay. Councilmember Scott, then Castleberry, then, and did you have...
Yeah, sure, I'll go after them.
Okay.
I'll be brief. I mean, I totally support putting it all on the April ballot. I remember looking at the polling data, and the polling data, I think, reflected that voters are more likely to support the utility and the bond being on the same election, or on the same ballot, and then they're also likely to support the bond utility and on the same ballot as transportation. And I like the idea of having a package. And maybe we could look back over the polling data, and you know, we're going to continue having these educational discussions, or we're having, we are having ward meetings, not together, but separately, on Sunday, and this is something that we can talk about then, and I can make sure that you guys get feedback on Monday. Hopefully, you can come on Sunday, so...
I just heard about it. I think I can be there for a little bit, because I'm already scheduled to be at...
If I can get somebody from the committee.
No, I can be there for about an hour.
Okay. That would be great. But yeah, I 100% support putting them on the same ballot. Absolutely.
Councilmember Castleberry?
Are we talking about putting the utility fee on the same ballot as the capital projects?
The first, the first question was just about the bonds, and then we'll do, now, Alex went ahead and answered, and I think maybe Bria also did, but, which is fine.
Mike, I have two different answers.
All right.
As far as the capital projects, for the transportation and stormwater utility bond, or stormwater bonds, I do support putting those all on the same thing in April. I do not support putting the utility fee on the April ballot, and this is why. In the next couple of months, we're going to end the TIF, and we're going to throw $4 million a year into the general fund. And once we do that, how are you going to come in and tell the citizens of Norman, "We just added $4 million to the general fund, but we want you to give us another $4 million for stormwater?" Their answer's going to be simple: "You've got the money." I'm just, I know that, I know we have $2 million shortfall, I understand, but I do not feel comfortable that we're going to have to have some more time to explain why we need $4 million, and we're still going to take $3 million out of the general fund. They're going to say, "Well, why are you taking $3 million out of the general fund? You just got $4 million. You don't need the money." So we're going, I think if we're going to go that route, we're going to need some time to educate of how we're going to spend the extra $4 million from the TIF, and why we still need this, and so I think that's more of a fall vote.
Councilmember Holden?
So I think we really are at a point where we don't, I don't think we really have much of a choice when it comes to the stormwater capital bond and the transportation bond being together. We know that transportation has to be done before June, or we lose the rate and everything. And I don't think there's much will to push stormwater back, because if we have a transportation bond and vote in April, we're not going to have a stormwater bond vote in May. So we're looking at August probably before, the earliest before we could do it, and I don't think anybody wants to do that. So I think we're kind of stuck with that one, and I'm okay with that. I'm fine with going to voters with a big package like that, and I think it is a good thing. My concern about the utility part is that, you know, we're proposing to do $60 million in capital improvement projects. The utility is how we'll pay for maintaining all this new stuff we're going to build. So, you know, I have just some heartburn about investing all this millions of dollars in this infrastructure and being unsure about how we're going to pay for maintaining it after we build it. And so that's where I have a heartburn about not doing utility at the same time, but at the same time, I also am not extremely confident that we're going to agree on a utility rate by January 8th. So maybe we can, but, so that's where I'm, that's where I'm at on that right now, so...
It's not you, it's us.
Yeah.
Councilmember Scott?
So, and I understand the perception of, you know, the money coming out of the TIF, but it's like you said last time, and it's in the, it's in the budget document, one of the things that's hurting our general fund is subsidizing stormwater, and so we absolutely need a utility. And I think as long as we are educating, we can make, we are going to have to, we have to make it happen. Like, there's no if, ands, or buts about it. We have to take that initiative, it's our responsibility to do that, and so I don't think we can keep delaying it, because it's hurting our city. And we don't, we have other things we need to be using the TIF money for, like CART or the senior center, some other things that we have that are priorities, so we can't, you know, I just don't think we can keep delaying.
Councilmember Clark?
I would add on, too, that, you know, the average resident may not be following what's happening with, you know, ending the TIF, but the, but the average resident who votes is going to see stormwater on one ballot and then see it again on a second one, and they're going to think, "Well, I've already paid for this, so why would I vote for this one?" So I think if we separate them, we are committing the utility to death unless we do it far enough away where they can't be confused with each other. I think that, it was more of the confusion part that we need to be mindful of, because there are other things we need to pay for. There are positions that we put in a budget and haven't funded.
Right.
Some good ones that we all were really excited about. So we need the money, and we need a stormwater utility. And I completely agree with, we need the means to care for the millions of dollars of infrastructure we're about to invest in our community.
Councilmember Scott?
I have no comment on that. I just think, you know, we're just going to have to suck it up and agree on something by January 8th. That's where I'm at. Whether that's, you know, a tier, I mean, maybe it's not what we're looking at right here, but it should be something along these lines, like this is a good starting place, and we need to figure it out.
And that's what we're here asking you guys for, so we can work on that further with the committee. I would also add very quickly, talking about confusing voting on stormwater twice in a year, I have a feeling water's going to be coming up in another year. And then we're talking about confusion between stormwater and water. So just throwing it out there, because it's confusing, you know, you delay one further in the year, fine, we're voting on it twice in one year, and then the next one that comes up is water. Don't know for sure that it will be, but possibly. I just voted on water twice last year, you know, so then we jeopardize water in the future as well. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a concern.
Councilmember Wilson?
So I've talked about this many times, but the number one pushback I get from my rural residents, and I know everybody in this room probably is very familiar with it, but I want to say it while we're talking about this, is that those folks that are in the rural area, say east of 48th, on agricultural land, don't have any man-made infrastructure, feel very confident that they don't get anything, and I know, I know what the argument is, I know what the counterargument is, but I'm here to represent those guys. They do not get anything for this. And so they're very much watching for this to come down the pipe. I do think that an infrastructure road, an infrastructure stormwater, is something that most people can get behind, but I think you tack on that utility, you're going to have some problems. But I understand, too, we don't want to have the infrastructure, I mean, I get all of that, but I just want to put my bid in for, if we could figure out a way to minimize the impact physically to the people in agricultural areas that are east of 48th Street, then I would probably be able to get behind any fee structure that we had.
Councilmember Clark?
Go ahead.
I have, was talking about this today, Councilmember Wilson, that I would support 48th being in the line for that reason. I mean, we, an interesting dichotomy of our community is urban versus rural. I think we need to be mindful of that, and I'm willing to talk about that.
Well, can I just counter on that, too? That the positive there is the folks that live out in the rural areas have a huge expense otherwise. We have to do, we, being, because I live out there, too. We have to do a lot of things that the city provides to the rest of, and we could probably drill down into roads and stripes and things all day long, you know, tit for tat on these, you know, what I pay for and what I don't pay for. But I think whenever you're talking about stormwater utility, you're talking a lot of times, most times, about a man-made infrastructure that we're needing to maintain. So I think that we do our part in many ways by maintaining... So, um, I, I think that we do our part in many ways by maintaining the fact that we can only build one house on 10 acres. We can't capitalize on all of our land. You know, we can, we, we're already holding a lot of, um, baggage for the protection of the, the watershed because of things like that. Like I can't sell off two acre plots off of my land and make money on it. I have, you can only build one house on 10 acres, you know? Like there are things like that that we already do to make sure that that watershed's protected.
Councilmember Holman.
That's where it gets a little bit tough, uh, because from my perspective, Ward 5 residents don't really benefit from the capital bond at all. They only benefit from the utility through the maintenance. None of these projects are in Ward 5. Well, none of these capital projects are in Ward 5.
Yeah, they are.
There's one, but I mean, out there on 108th where they live or where you live, none of these projects are even close to there.
Right. East of 48th, there are none of those projects.
Really the only real benefit that Ward 5 rural residents get is the utility and the maintenance crews and things that come and clear those culverts out and keep them from getting backed up by storm debris and branches and trees. So that's why I have a hard time drawing a line because I feel like they only benefit from utility.
I just want to address what you just said, if you don't mind. In the, in the meeting we had at Little Axe, the open house we had at Little Axe, that was a big discussion. Well, you were there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and when it, finally was discussed that the utility would pay for additional maintenance crews, just as Councilman Holman said. I mean, like light bulbs went on. We like that idea, you know? And, and Carrie's idea is that they each have kind of a region that they service unless there's an emergency in a certain part of town. And that then, and those crews give regular maintenance to those sections of the city. So rural Ward 5 would have their own crew and, and, and people were excited about that. And yes, you're right, the utility would pay for that. So that was a topic of conversation at the.
A different utility rate east of 48th is something I would consider.
A maintenance, a, a more maintenance utility rate, that's, I don't, I know.
The committee didn't discuss that because we didn't know if it was legal. So I couldn't.
I wouldn't want to exempt everything east of 48th from utility, but maybe it's a different rate.
Well, I mean, we, you know, I can imagine, well, I guess we've got legal staff here, but that it would be legal, but it's illegal to exclude us from recycling. It's legal to exclude us, exclude us from water. If you don't get those services from sewer.
You don't get those services, so you don't pay for them. We don't, I don't pay for them. You don't pay for them.
Well, I understand that, but the point of this is that those east of 48th, say 180th, 156th, they don't feel like they get what everybody else is going to be getting for this. Not my personal opinion.
One of the things that the committee did discuss in reference to that, again, I respect and understand, you have such far, far brighter understanding of that, was that the reason why we chose the flat fee and hoping to find a nominal fee was to offset that to where at least on the utility side of things, someone could say, well, I can, I can, that's, that's kind of, I can get that because I come into town or I, or I, that, that's this and I, and I'm not going to justify, my house is over two feet over the, where the tier ends in square feet. And so that was the, the thought process of why the preferred option from the committee was a flat fee. Um, because anytime you get into, I don't, you do, or it's some sort of tier, then there's always a dynamic that someone is going to view that as not right. And so the thought process, that was really the reason why the flat fee. That's also why the committee's come back and said, well, you have a better understanding than we do. And so we're understanding there's other options, but that was the original intent and why the preferred option originally from, you know, back in January, February was, was the flat fee.
Sean, would you comment? Because I've, I've been a proponent of the tiered rate. And then we had a discussion, would, would you comment on what, what the other cities around Oklahoma are, are doing?
Sure, Mayor. And Carrie is here as well, she knows more than I do. We think there are over 25 utilities in Oklahoma, roughly, just to put that in perspective, big and small. Um, the movement in the last 10 or 15 years has been to the simpler, flat fee, or in the case of Oklahoma City even years ago, the water meter rate kind of a thing, based on water meter size. But the movement really has been in recent years in Oklahoma and around the Midwest particularly, has been to the simpler, flat fee basis because it's easier to understand and easier to sell to the citizens.
Yeah, I just thought that was interesting when you, when you pointed that out.
Part of that impervious area had been the dominant method for many, many years.
Maybe because other cities have, have had to wrestle with all this stuff and have found it's so complicated. Councilmember Wilson. The water meter size would be highly applicable in this situation because those folks east of 48th do not have water meters. So how would that work?
It's effectively a flat fee.
I'll just offer why we didn't go that route because we did discuss it as far as the committee goes. It's a flat fee in Oklahoma City based on the size water meter you have. Um, and I don't know all the different water meter sizes, but that determines what you pay. So we, stormwater and water is already pretty confusing, especially in this town. We didn't want to co-mingle the two. Water meter size has nothing to do with stormwater and stormwater runoff whatsoever. That was just a simple way they chose. And I, and I think I remember speaking to a person in charge of Oklahoma City and they said, man, we regret that. I mean, they don't, they do regret it, but it is a different version of a flat fee.
How do they handle their rural areas? Everybody?
I, I can't speak to that. Carrie can.
Oklahoma City, if you're, you have a water meter for Oklahoma City, you pay that fee. If you don't have, there's a, a different rate, but basically I've talked to people who live in rural parts of Oklahoma City and they pay a stormwater fee.
You know how much their rural stormwater fee is?
I don't, but I can find that.
Yes. Councilmember Kipman.
I just, as one of the liaisons, I remember those early meetings where the discussion was about the flat fee. And I'm looking at the alternative A rate structure where it's, you know, the flat fee of $5 and a low income. And I would say add seniors, uh, rate of 350. And there's some of the discussions being that that flat rate of $5 tracks with, I see Ken over there, are other, are other utilities at sewer, Ken?
Yeah, the sewer maintenance fee, $5 a month.
Uh, and, and I'm just kind of curious, how did we come to that flat fee? And would it be analogous to, as a part of this stormwater discussion? I mean, not, not that it's for the same purpose, but, you know, in the sense of for general community, you know, services or whatever.
Oh, the need for it is based on just because of the, we started with the center of town, the oldest parts of town, because of the clay pipes are the first ones to deteriorate and need to be replaced. And so, um, it started with a, a, a fee designated specifically for maintenance. We can't, it's a pay-as-you-go fee, so we can't use it to bond and do anything else with. And we start with the center sections of town. We've been kind of circling our way more towards the outer newer sewers to replace them. But in the beginning, we were, or even now, we're doing like 25, 3,000 feet of sewer line replacement. So it's been very, very helpful to the sewer utility to reduce our inflow and, and keep our rates relatively low on this, on the wastewater treatment side.
But why didn't we, why didn't we tier those rates or something depending upon the size of your house or size of the sewer line, anything along those lines? I'm just wondering if there was that discussion back then.
There, I was not here when that discussion started, but the folklore is, they talked about different rates. And somebody said, it's a cheeseburger a month, that's just $5.
Somebody said.
Cheeseburger a month.
And we have, and we have had so much thanks.
There's our work.
Somebody said two cheeseburgers.
Councilmember.
So on that, on that line you're talking about the sewer, you tiered it out. I've often thought that, and I, I know we're regressing in the conversation, might be saying this again, but that we should do it like that for stormwater as well because it's the older parts of Norman that needs more work. It's the, the suburbs have retention ponds. The newer, more modern stuff already has a lot made. And our exterior are, uh, I'm calling it the riparian zone. That's what Ward 5 is. It's worse, you know, soaking up your water with our 10 acres and one house. That's my thought. Let's do it like that.
Yes. Councilmember Castleberry.
I appreciate all, Councilwoman Wilson, I appreciate all the fertilizer you're sticking into our system too.
We don't have that much livestock out there. That was another thing I threw out there. We don't have as much livestock as you think. There are no corporate farms out there.
I'm not saying livestock, fertilizer.
We don't fertilize.
Again, um, so skipping down here, do I think it should be fully funded? I'm going to be consistent with my position as last time. In that if you're going to have a stormwater utility, you need to have it be, it needs to fully fund. It needs to be a standalone enterprise fund with no subsidy from the general fund. Now, I understand, based on what I said previously, that really makes it mad because now I'm going to ask people for $7 million instead of $4 million and I already got $4. I know I'm asking for more money, but I think fundamentally, if you're going to set this up, you need to set it up properly, just like any other sewer fund, our water fund, our sanitation fund. It needs to, if it's going to be an enterprise fund, it needs to pay for itself.
So can I make sure I understand specifically what you're saying? So we as a committee have proposed $7.4 million with the understanding that 3.1 of that, million of that was money that would be from the, um, general, has been funded through the general fund.
Correct.
So you're proposing is that number should be $4.3 million, if I understand correctly, and be an enterprise fund that, that is just basically specific for stormwater.
With no subsidy from the general fund.
So instead of a $7.4 million stormwater program, which is what the committee agreed on, just for clarity purposes, we can raise the 4.3, let's say, and that would be the entire stormwater program. I would just say.
Ideally, I would say no, it needs to be 7.4.
Need to raise more. Right.
That's what it needs to be, that's what it needs to be.
I would just ask council, whatever number you agree on, whether it's part general fund, part utility, all utility, we have to tell that to our, to the citizens and residents of Norman, we can't promise a $7.4 million program and only fund a $4 million program.
And, and I totally agree and that's.
So that's really got to be thought about ahead of time.
Part of my angst of saying, hey, we're only going to raise $4 million, but we're going to subsidize $3.1 million out of the general fund.
Sure.
And then two years from now, or three years from now, Anthony will tell us when PSST comes around, we don't have $3 million in the general fund to subsidize this. And so wait a minute, you, you, when we voted on this, you told us you did. I mean, you're basically telling voters that the council in their, all their future budgets is going to allocate at least $3 million to stormwater. No way you can keep that promise. So why make it? There's no way you can keep that promise. And we talk about transparency and trust. I, I don't see how you can say, well, we bought it, we meant to, we planned on it, but none of us, that's, that was a future council. None of us on this council voted for that four, four or five years ago. So I think you, you've got to set it up properly. All that being said, I don't think the utility passes regardless of how you set it up. And so that's why I do not want to couple it with the transportation and the bond part of it. It will take a couple of years, a year or so before any of those capital projects come into place where you need all this maintenance. So the utility is not as pressing as the capital projects are. And that's why I think you can wait on the utility fund until we get something that we agree on. And I don't think we're going to do that by January. This is just me, I could be the outlier here. But I really believe that once you throw, once you start throwing that money into the, into the tip in there, it's going to be really hard to explain to people why you need $4 million or $7 million more when you just quote have a $2 million surplus.
Can I go back to that? What we, what I hear consistently saying is everybody, I haven't heard maybe a couple of people concerned, but the capital project is, is, do we commit to our group that April is the likely time for that?
And I believe that's what Dr. Carter expressed at the meeting. Dr. Carter also expressed that he thought we should do all three.
I think our committee, that, that's a nice first.
Am I remembering that right?
That was, that was what I remembered him saying.
I'd say transportation, stormwater capital for sure being in April.
Okay. I just want to make sure I got that.
One answer.
So I'm kind of, I'm kind of one answer. I want to get that kind of, so that we have that. And then, then of course.
And I may be the only one, but I, I, I think utility should not be in April. But I think it jeopardizes capital projects.
I, I would also offer just, and I complete, I understand every one of these comments at this table and, and the committee discussed these at length as well, but the, the, the utility is going to pay for maintenance of that capital investment, that infrastructure investment. But we are already years behind on maintenance of the infrastructure we have now.
If it passes.
And we, if it passes. And we are not maintaining, not only are we not doing a very good job maintaining, they're doing the best they can. I'm not, I'm not. Not only are we not doing a very good job of maintaining our existing infrastructure and our pipes and our system under the streets that we don't see and, and, and even know what it all looks like, but we're also not maintaining our creeks and streams that touch every single part of this city. And, and that is really detrimentally affecting not only Lake Thunderbird, but the, you know, the, the Canadian River. So there is maintenance that we are 20 years, if not more, behind on. I just wanted to add that. It's not just maintenance on the, on these capital projects.
Councilmember Clark.
She's reading my line because I've got residents reporting sinkholes in their backyard that we can't explain because we have pipes we've never looked at. We, I've got HOAs that need help with their retention and detention ponds, and we need to address that now. I'm, I don't want to wait anymore. Our residents have waited long enough. I understand that it's not fully funded. I get that and I appreciate your concerns, but I respectfully disagree based on the unique nature that we have in Norman as being a city that has to vote on the creation or raising of utilities. We need to get started. I, there will never be a perfect answer and I'm tired of waiting. My residents are tired of waiting. I think we put it all together and we, we have ward meetings and get you feedback directly from the residents, perhaps a, uh, some polling again to see which one works. But hearing your, your reasoning for the flat fee make, it helps me understand and that's why I want you guys at every ward meeting, we're of TV commercials, it'll be great because you guys have worked so hard. I might, I might draw my line.
There's the stars.
But I mean, this is, this is not something, this is, our residents came up with this and, and I'm very proud of that. And it's from all backgrounds, from all wards, and I'm ready to move forward on it.
As a liaison to that committee, I know part of your discussion was.
Sure.
What is simple and what can pass, right?
Well, and, and are those the same?
Right.
There's an absolute political piece to this.
You know, but kind of went with what was simple. But $5 a month, $6 a month, a flat fee is not equitable. There is no way around it. It is not fair. That's what we heard last time. I totally, I want to be on record, I totally support a utility fee. We need a stormwater utility. I am not saying we don't need one. I'm talking about the ability to get it passed. It does us no good. Let me ask something. If this utility passes or fails a second time, what message does that give to you as a council member? You have tried to pass something twice that failed. Are you going to come back and say, you know what voters? You don't know what you're talking about. We're going to throw something at you a third time. Or are you going to say, listen, the city does not want a utility fee? And I don't want to be in that position where we have to say, guys, I, I voted this down twice. How many times are you going to bring this to me? I'm not passing it.
Well, we'll actually just have to keep bringing it back because we desperately need
The second time is, is we, we've got to get it right. And you got to remember how bad this thing failed the first time.
That was honestly why we kind of went to the complete opposite end of the spectrum is what the first recommendation was. That was another reason why we were at the far end, as, you know, as far away from what the first plan was.
Councilmember Scott, then Beerman.
I just want to, um, second parts of that, uh, which is the tiered aspect of it. Uh, and while we get the, the flat rate is simple and it meets the need, uh, I don't, Uh, and while we get the, the flat rate is simple and it meets the need, uh, I don't, I agree, I don't think it's equitable. Um, and that's just from what we've heard from, from the community. Um, and I actually think, I want to say, I really want to look at the data again, or have another poll go out. Because I think that's what voters would support is a tiered fee. And I'm not sure that the tiers that have been presented are going to meet the need. Um, and I know that there's the concern about making promises we can't keep. So I support a tiered rate. Even though.
We could add a tier for riparian.
Right.
Riparian's own tier.
Yeah, and a very like a low, you know, 30 cents.
Yeah.
You know, 30 cents out in Ward 5 and then something else.
A quarter.
37. Fine, you get your quarter.
Ward 3 has, yeah, I'm rural too, you know.
That's why I say go.
Oh, yeah, and I have it in Ward 8 as well, and I also have HOAs that don't want to pay a stormwater fee. But I will go and I will, I'll knock some doors, and I'll be happy to talk to people at the doors.
Okay.
When I have, you know.
Councilmember Beerman.
So I, I completely understand the fundamental issues of fairness with tier versus flat fee. But one thing, one thing I realized when I was looking at my last set of bills from the city is we do have other rates that are flat regardless of your consumption. You put a, your trash bin out there with one bag in it.
Oh, yeah.
You're paying the same amount as someone who stuffs their trash bin full. And the same with recycling.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you fill your recycling bin full, you're still playing, paying the same rate as someone who just has a couple bottles in there. So, I mean, I still, I still do think I prefer a tiered approach. But if it is the consensus of council that a flat rate is the way to go, I think that does fit firmly in line with other enterprise funds and other utilities rates that we already have.
Councilmember Holman.
Do agree with that. I would go back to the point about fully funding the utility. You know, again, because we have to vote on utility rates, or have a citywide vote for it. My concern is that if it's not fully funded at first, that it probably never will be. I don't.
This is not fully funded.
Right, I know, if the utility, if the utility is not fully funded from the moment it starts, I don't, I don't foresee it ever being fully funded because it would be years before there'd be a rate increase again. That rate increase isn't going to be able to be high enough to bring it to full funding at that point. People are going to want a 50% increase in the rate, or 100% or whatever. So, and I would have concern that a future council in a few years would, there'd be a budget problem and say, well, we can't afford this anymore. So we're cutting 3 million from stormwater, and we've got the utility to, you know, pay for some of it. But we're not going to be doing the program like we promised, and so, um, but I mean, I understand practicality and.
Keep in mind, we'd be doing a million dollars more than we're doing now, we'd be doing 33% more than we're doing now. It's the biggest budget increase of any item in the city.
I know, but we're still not going to be doing what we need to be doing, a city this size, and we're growing.
I do always remember what was said over and over and over again by Harold Heiple since 2008. If we had put a $2 stormwater fee into place the day that we did the strategic, the stormwater master plan. If we had done that, then we could have raised it 50 cents, we could have raised it $2, we could have raised it all along. We never got anything. And, and as far as the, the 23 meetings that we had over with, with citizens. I heard over and over and over again, if you're, if you're already spending $3 million, now we don't want to pay for that because we've already paid for that, so we want you to keep that in your general fund. So, and there were a few people that said, well, I think we should fully fund it. But they were far outnumbered by the people that said you're already funding this much, so we're willing to get you started with this much more so we can improve the program. I'm just, I'm just reporting what was said.
And that was a big reason why the committee, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, it's an equity issue too, because none of the other utilities are subsidized. So what is to keep sanitation or water from coming and saying, well, we don't want to ask our customers to pay more. So instead of doing a water rate increase next year, why don't you guys kick in money from the general fund instead?
You've got $4 million, but Tiff, why don't you subsidize the water fund?
That's what I worry about, but I can be practical here, I, I don't want the perfect to, you know, prevent us from doing anything here. I want to get something passed, we need to get something passed. I'm just trying to make it clear that I, you know, have concern about it never being fully funded and that not being equitable with how we do our other utilities and, you know.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree with that. I just remember we went down that road before, and you have to realize how much money we would be asking people for. If we're worried about 3, 6, and 9, or we're worried about 5, or 6.
The cost of Norman residents and Norman elected officials for 40 years not doing what we should have been doing. So we didn't elect the people or push them to do what they should have done in the 70s, or 80s, or 90s, or 2000s. And so now we're all going to have to pay the price for it, so, I mean.
Yeah, but they have to vote, they have to agree that they're going to pay the price.
With a hamburger.
The other 25 utilities in, in the state, did any of those citizens vote on that?
No.
Big dynamic change.
There's some.
Not favorable.
I mean, I was going to make a point to that point, uh, most of the stormwater utilities in Oklahoma and throughout the country are subsidized by their general fund. Most stormwater programs, municipalities have a subsidized stormwater system, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, all those in Oklahoma.
Are they subsidy enterprise funds?
This, yes. In fact, Oklahoma City is, as we mentioned earlier, Oklahoma City is struggling right now. They're paying so much from their general fund to maintain stormwater, they're wanting an increase in their rate, but they're concerned that their, that their council and their voters may not support it.
I think they just.
Well, they sank rates last year.
Yeah, this notion of a subsidized stormwater enterprise is very common across the country, very common.
I would also add that the utility will address the mandates that we have talked a lot about, and the water quality in Lake Thunderbird. And, and the clock is ticking that we have to make an improvement on the water quality in Lake Thunderbird. The utility will pay for that. The capital projects, there'll be some incidental water quality, but most of those are in the Canadian, you know, that's, because that's the parts of town that, that flood, they're in the Canadian river watershed. So, so not passing, I mean, I, I realize we're talking about next year regardless for both, but I mean, not passing it. We won't be able to pay for mandates, these mandates from EPA and, and DEQ if we, if there's not a utility. And, and that is where we, we could get in some serious trouble.
That's right, you, I mean, you mentioned the $5.
Councilmember Higman.
I was just going to ask, you've mentioned a $5 fee in the cheeseburger, I like all the idea, that would cover the mandates, yes? So I'm, I'm just kind of walking through that, your number that you chose earlier, and I, from a committee perspective, our thought was really, let's get something in place. That's really the main, number one message.
Well, that was one of my follow-up question or comment, uh, I think it was, and I'm not sure if it was Brett, or one of the, one of the committee members. You know, it really kind of resonated with me a little bit, especially with the recent conversations I've shared with council and the pitchers. That, you know, we had Gray and Main Street and Sims and all, you know, almost a whole mile of streets flooded over because of the Moll Creek Channel, uh, that really, you know, when you can't cross a road, that's a safety issue. That may be a larger capital project, but really makes you think about the impact of our roads. You know, and I know I've talked to Sean a little bit about, you know, I don't know if we have any idea of how much impervious surface all of the city roads, you know, um, in the entire citywide account for relative to impervious area for non-residential and residential. But if we, you know, I think that we have to think about this as a community issue. You know, because my understanding from Carrie and staff, and listening to the citizens discuss it, is that we allow stormwater. Part of the stormwater solution for any project or development is to put water into the street. You know, we, we have a percentage that we allow water to be put into the street. The street is a part of the infrastructure for our stormwater system. And as a result, we have places now, I mean, where we've had bridges wash out and flooding on, on, on Main Street. Uh, on west side of town, Main Street and downtown, you know, uh, Elm Street, you know, down in more, you know, um, you know, areas down in, in Ward 7. And I think you've mentioned areas down Beaumont, down in Ward 1.
Over.
You know, and so there may, you know, there may, those, some of those may be related to ultimately larger capital projects, but they show that, you know, a stormwater fee also is going to be needed in part because of, you know, the road system. And nobody pays for that, I mean, you know, and, and other than the sense of, you know, if you did a, a staggered fee kind of approach where you went out, you know, from the large area, you know, yeah, the people in Ward 4 would pay more, and I'm not going to support that because the fact that Ward 4 has more roads because it's more developed, and it's downtown, and it's more dense. You know, doesn't make it fair to the people who live there to have to pay more for that. Uh, and I'm not sure you're going to convince the business people to support that either, because if you did it for residential, to me, you'd have to do it for non-residential because the business people that operate in downtown and Campus Corner in Ward 4, where it's more dense and there's more roads. We should have to pay more just like the residential people. And so unless this council is going to go that route and charge all the business people and all the residential people more money that might live in the more dense area where there's more roads that contribute to more of these stormwater issues. Then I think you have to step back and look at it like, is this a community issue? If everybody has kids that go to schools, you know, not everybody, but a lot of people have kids that go to schools, they're in public schools. You got to drive the roads to get to normal public schools, you want to go to the Norman Health Regional Center, you got to drive roads to get to Norman Regional Center. You know, if you have roads that are flooding over because we have stormwater problems, because, you know, uh, channels aren't cleaned out, creeks aren't cleaned out. Uh, culverts aren't cleaned out, whatever, uh, then I think that makes it a community issue, and that's where I, you know, I think that, um, you know, the, you know, whether a, a flat fee is fair or is it, it makes sense, you know, um, I think that's obviously subject to debate. But I do think you have to look at it more from a community standpoint, and I think the, the, I can't remember if it was, who, which one of the committee members it was. Couple of them talked about that, when you look at it in the context of the roads, that does add a new dynamic, I think in my mind, a little bit to the conversation. That it's more than just, you know, a person's individual parcel in their home, uh, that contribute, um, you know, to the whole stormwater infrastructure.
So I, before I, I thought I heard you say something about a $5 fee, and I think that's where Andy was going. I, I, I'm, I'm just trying to get us.
Well, I mean, that's one of their, one of their alternative A rate structures is that flat fee, and that, part of that discussion from the committee just was kind of bringing that up. I don't know if we've talked about it as a council, you know, um, you know, was, was the idea of, of, you know, of a $5 flat fee. And I know that's what we do for, uh, the utility for stormwater, or for sewer. Uh, and I know that that was one of the conversations that the committee discussed because of the context of the roads. Because, you know, really, um, and then I wanted to go ahead and say that in light of the recent other conversations of other council members about, you know, you know, we should charge more for the people in the center and, and move out, when in reality, that part of the reason why the center has more, uh, stormwater challenges is, is in part, um, you know, because we have more roads, it is more dense, uh, you know, in the downtown and Campus Corner area, for example. And I, you know, I think that puts an unfair burden on the residents, and I would certainly think it'd have to be the same for, we'd have to have the same kind of a structure for, for non-residential and residential. And so if we want to make it more expensive for businesses to be downtown or Campus Corner, um, and, you know, versus other parts of, of town. Uh, then I think that's a different conversation that we haven't had, and I, and I, I don't think I'm inclined to support that. But I do think that's a fair point that needs to be raised, that my fellow council members need to think about. And if a flat fee of $5 is then maybe considered to be more equitable in the context of the roads being a part of the infrastructure and the system. You know, I, I don't know if that's the answer or not, but I think that's something worth, worth us discussing.
So if the flat fee is the same as what we're doing on some of our other utility fees, and the flat fee is the same as the other. I mean, because I've been a real tiered rate person, so.
I have been too.
I'm kind of having a hard time getting there on this one, but, so if, if those things are all the same and we're talking about the whole community and we don't want to be dividing people up if we just say, okay, everybody pays $5, then. I, I don't, I, I, I kind of see the reasoning in that. Yeah.
I mean, from my ward standpoint, I'm fine with a $5 a month flat fee because the majority of my ward has bigger lots and bigger homes, and that'd be great, we would not be paying our fair share. But I, I think if you're voting for it, it, it's just going to be awful hard to tell somebody who lives in a thousand square foot house that your fee is exactly the same as somebody who lives in a 5,000 foot house.
Yeah, but let's be clear, hold on, I mean, just in fairness, even the tiered rate structures right now as they're proposed are based on singles, first floor story only. So you could have a two, you could have a 2,000 square foot home that the first floor footprint is 1,000 square feet. And you're paying the same as grandma that say that lives in a 1,000 square foot home. I mean, so, I mean, there's, I mean, there are going to be inequities in any system, even if you do a tiered system.
So just, I just, I want to. Oh, I totally get that, but there's a difference between a perception of everybody pays the same, then, oh, there's tiers. So you're trying to tell me that the person in the top tier pays three times as much as I do? Whether that, the perception of that is much more, oh, that's, that's more equitable, I can live with that as opposed to.
Oh, I, I, I understand, I'm not, and like I said, I've, you know, I've been a tier supporter as well, I just, listening to people and what can, what can get passed and, you know.
Well, I support tiers.
I fear if you get to the point, I mean, I, I think that we, we have to be cognizant of, is that, you know, and I wasn't on council when these discussions were happening last time. But I attended a lot of those meetings, and it seemed like there was multiple, multiple meetings and months and months and months where the tiers were being slashed and, you know, diced and turned and, you know, I mean, there was a, you know, I mean, I mean, there were lots of different tiers and different iterations of where we draw the lines at, and, and I'm not saying that's bad, but, um, you know, that, you know, wherever you draw the line at in a tier, there's going to be some inequity on one side or the other.
I had a stack like this of all the different A, B, C, D, E, 1, 2, 3, A, 1, 2, 1, 3. Yeah, we had a stack of them.
Let me circle back around to, I think this discussion has been very healthy, but I think it also proves or shows we can't get there by January 9. And that's, my other thing about putting a utility fee on an April ballot is I don't think we can get consensus, we can, we can have meetings with our constituents and get enough feedback that we can do it by January 9.
I'm on meetings on Sunday.
I've already had my meeting too, I don't have no one, I'm just.
He had his meeting first.
Your people were fine with a $5 fee.
Of course they were, they're paying them, they're paying their fair share.
I think, I think, I think here's what I, from a citizen, this is not a member of the committee, the one thing I would want to, since, since I'm in the chair tonight, would be that if you're going to do a flat fee, whether that be $5 or 625, the two options that were presented by the committee. To me, that allows the committee and this group to move forward for an April-type vote as it relates to the utility. I do agree with Councilmember Castleberry, for us to go back as a committee, we may be able to pull it together, and you may be able to decide. But I think that that is, potentially makes it much more challenging to have everything together in April. So that's just a thought for you.
That you mean if they prefer tiers?
If they prefer tiers.
And we need to rework tiers, that makes it much harder.
Makes, makes it much harder, so I don't know if that, that's not the reason why you should choose something or not choose something, but I think that that is just the reality.
And I'm not saying that the tier system that I proposed is good, I realize the top rate was too high, but that was 20 minutes. I spent 20 minutes on that, okay? So if we got together and we all played with a calculator, I mean, this is not a two or three month project.
It's proven to be so far two years almost, so, yeah, but I, I'm with you, I understand the calculation.
Once you, once you put the concept up, once you get the concept up, we're going to do tiers. Tiers are going to be these percentages of what tiers are going to be, and it was top, I mean, once you have those parameters, then it's just a matter, hey, what if we make this?
Math is easy.
$9, okay, what happens if we do it 10, they can use what F in a little bit. And, you know, once you have those general parameters, concepts of what you want it to look like, then it's just a math calculation.
Councilmember Higman.
Just my, I guess, last two comments, uh, one, uh, uh, I think 625, a flat fee of 625 is dead on arrival. I mean, I only think the $5 might be palatable because of what we've already done, like with sanitation sewer. No deal, because it's a flat $5 and, you know, and it's, $5 just sounds easier to say, if you will, than 625, you know. Uh, you know, and it is something that people are paying for right now, that is a flat fee that's arguably not directly related to, you know, something specific to their impact on the overall system, it's just a, a flat fee for maintenance of the whole system. And then number two, I mean, I was, as one of the liaisons, I was early on a strong advocate for doing the bond first and the fee second. And, and I think I said this in your last committee meeting, but, you know, I'm, I listen and I, I'm willing to, uh, to, you know, be open-minded, as I've always said. And, um, I, I still think the bond is, you know, is very important. But I, listening to Han and the committee members and, you know, some council members and these people in town. You know, I, I do worry that if we don't put the fee on with this other package of stuff. That it will be very hard to pass a fee at any point down the road on its own. Uh, I'm hopeful that if we do the bond work and, you know, we show positive things, that we could then get a fee passed. But, you know, uh, I, you know, I think that we've talked about the idea of like a vision Norman, invest Norman, get people out excited about a package of things on a, on a ballot. You know, that they would vote, go out and they'd vote yes on everything, I guess. And then my last comment is I do think it's critical, you know, and I, I, I feel very strongly about this, that, you know, before we send anything out to a ballot, and, and I'm very, very leery if I will support sending anything out to a ballot until we have an actionable plan for the senior center. You know, I've felt like I have brought forward some ideas that could be used as a part of the transportation bond. I know we've talked about it in one of our last meetings, uh, but I think that that's, you know, critical in my mind to be successful on anything we put on a ballot. That we have, um, we have an actionable plan, something that means, you know, you know, a plan to have the dirt and to have the money to build a senior center, not saying we have to be breaking ground, but we have to have something more than hope. We have to have, you know, what I'll call an actionable plan to make that happen. I think that that's, you know, from a public trust standpoint, very critical. And I think that, and I think that's got to be a priority with staff and everything that we're doing, you know, making, working on these different ideas that we've talked about, um, you know, to make, make it, make it a reality.
And I totally agree with that, but I also think we can do that in the next 30 days. I mean, I think we have an actionable plan, we just need to sit, sit down and vote on it.
So Kate mentioned that, throwing that out there. I would just add that you're, the discussion about worrying about equity and a flat fee, do remember that the bond is based on your, the assessed value of your property. That is, couldn't be any more equitable, so. You know, that is equitable, and then if we're talking about a flat fee on top of that, you know, we're asking for two funding mechanisms, which is a lot. Last time we only asked for one, there was no bond, and that didn't pass. So the, the bond is equitable based on assessed value of your property. You know, maybe a small fee is, is our best hope. I mean, I, you know, I don't know, we, we, there is an equitable portion of this, is what I'm. There is an equitable portion of this, is what I'm trying to say.
Councilmember Bierman?
I do want to say, whatever we decide, I want to be sure that we have a really comprehensive and aggressive education and outreach strategy. Before I entered the doggy daycare world, that is what I did for a living, I ran issue campaigns, and it is absolutely amazing to me still how you feel like you're reaching people, and then you do a poll and kind of see how your education outreach is going, and you realize that you're not actually reaching the people who don't know anything about it. You're reaching the people who are already connected. I'm not saying that I know exactly how to solve that issue, but we need to be making sure. TV ads, not a terrible idea. So, you know, I mean, we need to be doubling, redoubling, tripling our efforts, paid Facebook advertisements, literal signs just out in the community, you know, upcoming stormwater vote, "Talk to us about stormwater." I think the storm drain art is, you know, going to be a good way to...
We're funding it.
I know, and that's going to be a great way to actually show, you know, and bring some awareness to our storm drains. You know, any information we can provide, you know, data we can provide about how badly impaired Lake Thunderbird is, graphs and charts and websites and Facebook posts and newspaper ads and inserts. We need to be doing nothing but talking about stormwater once we decide what's going to be on a ballot because that's how we're going to get it passed, is talking to people. And, I mean, I'm still the crazy lady who talks to someone at the gas station. I will pull up to a pump with someone on the other side simply so I can ask them mostly about stormwater, also about senior center. But, you know, I do that because I want to get a sense of how just the average person feels about it, if they even know about it. And it's still, you know, 75, 80% of people don't know anything about it, let alone that we had a failed vote, you know, a couple of years ago. So, you know, we really, I just want to be sure that whatever we decide, that we're really willing to put forward the effort to making sure that people are aware of what's happening.
And I think, Councilmember Bierman, I think that's, that's, to me, is one of the, that's one of the things I think that why we wanted to come and have this conversation tonight, because we want to have cohesiveness. If we have cohesiveness support from the council, then I know our committee has expressed that we'll continue to try to do that, whether it's open houses or education. And obviously, obviously, and Han deliverables, so we have a lot agreed, absolutely what you said.
Okay. Before we, I honestly think we have some real things that when you have your ward meetings, and I'm going to try to make it to as many as I can, and we'll try to work it so that there's people there that can help answer questions about this, but before we leave, we can talk about the $5 rate. We can talk about the tier that was already suggested. We can talk about putting all three of them on together, and we can get some feedback on that. This list of capital projects, this list is the one that was approved by the Stormwater Citizens Committee. It was based on our input, so all they really did was say, "Yeah, we agree with that because we put some things in here that weren't in here. We took some things out that were going to be handled with transportation bond." And by doing that, we ended up with all of the top 12 projects that need to be done and still had something in every ward. So I just wanted to make sure everybody had looked at that, and if you have problems with it or things that we left off, then we need to know about that because I think this is, I thought this was pretty close to being ready to go, but if it's not, we need to know it.
Does anyone point out to me what project is in Ward 1? Because on the revised list, I'm not seeing it.
Your slide is cut off, so we...
It's on that picture.
Okay.
Ah, okay. It's in the email that was attached to the letter we sent you all, I think, got last week with our...
Oh, it is.
Oh, it's both. I thought this was the original list.
No, no.
It was revised.
It was too big. I was like, "Where's the next?"
We can get some feedback.
Councilmember Holman, and then Councilmember Wilson.
I would like to get more information from staff about the Lindsay Street. Since we're going to make that a part of the transportation project, that means we'll have to do the full Lindsay Street deal and not just part of it, but, and since it partially impacts Ward 4, too, the Elm and Lindsay Street area, so I'd like to maybe have some more information about the scope of that project, exactly what it's going to...
Go back to that, too, because it's talk transportation, and that will be part of that scope.
So we'll have another shot at this.
So we're supposed, you know, we kind of reconvene the committee for Monday. Am I, I'm gathering that maybe we don't need to meet, want to meet yet because we...
The only reason I would...
The only thing we would meet would be to work on the utility, and there hasn't been any...
And to hear information from the ward meetings, but maybe it's better that we put that off.
As of Monday, there will only be one other, two other ward meetings.
Could we ask our Director of Communications to do social media polls? I mean, the Norman News, we could send it out, and Google Forms are pretty easy to collect information that way. I mean, there are ways for us to start collecting information.
Well, I mean, you can do SurveyMonkey and things. It's not always, it's not always statistically valid, but we can, we've kind of talked about that a little bit, but we'll talk to Annalise and see if she... Annalise, yes. So if there's some kind of poll that we can do, we kind of talked about that earlier.
Councilmember Wilson?
Okay, real quick, I know we're on time, but I would like to look at this capital project list, and a little bit to Councilmember Holman's point, that Ward 5 is $2.5 million worth of capital projects compared to the other wards. Just look at it, and then look at the fact that there's not one project east of 48th Street. Ward 5 is weird, and I say Ward 5 a lot of times, I mean rural Ward 5, and that's where I'm saying that the folks east of 48th, say 156th, you know, 60th, 7th, 8th, you know, all the way to 180th, they're getting nothing for the things that they spend in the city of Norman, a lot of times. Step back. Just look at it with those eyes. Drive out there. See where the city of Norman might do anything.
Well, I mean, we spend, Ward 5 gets about the third down out of all the wards almost every year in road projects. And sometimes that includes culvert projects, and they get police and fire. And so it's not that they don't get anything from living in Norman. And there is a lot of flooding between 60th, the lake, and then the area right past the lake. There is a ton of flooding out there. I spent seven years driving around picking up kids that were left at home when I was a principal. Yes. Councilmember Andy.
May I just, I'm just real curious.
Councilmember Andy.
Do I have, no, yeah. Committee member, committee member. They'll still have me. I think, I just want to make sure that, I think, when Amanda and I are marching orders, so to speak, we're not going to reconvene our committee on Monday, is what I believe I hear.
I think that's a good idea.
We are, we are going to wait until we hear from this body on what our next step is as a committee. We're happy to do, Councilmember Bierman, whatever was right next up. I'm excited to report back, and we probably will report back to our committee. It appears as though there's cohesive thoughts that we will be doing at least the capital project in April, and so we'll let them know that unless someone is telling me differently, but I think that's the appropriate step to our committee. Is there anything that I'm misunderstanding from the direction tonight, or Amanda, is that, just want to make sure we're very clear.
But if we could make up our minds, if we could make up our minds, the sooner we do it, the sooner we'll have things that we can really...
As soon as you give it, if there's instruction to be given, as soon as we're giving it, we will call the committee together.
Yes. If there's a set date that you would like us to look at, or a timeframe, probably it would be nice to have like a week or two so we could find schedules, but we're happy to do that, too. And I know as we're looking at an April vote, that likely needs to occur very, very quickly.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, because January 8th is your first reading for April election.
So we have two ward meetings on Sunday. We have...